Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise and we'll say that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What items, public comment? Did you have a chance to read the minutes from last week?
I make a motion to approve this presentation.
Second half?
It's been moved in second half. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pass three to zero. Mission or comments, any reports?
Yeah, I didn't have, I'm just gonna look back at my calendar. Last week, it's been a busy week. So last week, I attended, the city of Effingham had a special meeting. And I attended that. I did the second round of the new city manager from the city of Atchison, did a county tour with me. So I took her around and she met the rest of our department heads and got to see our facilities. And then I spent a lot of time at Senior Village last week for meetings. And then that continued into yesterday. So. And then I went to the city commission meeting yesterday in support of our department heads that presented our solid waste and joint communications budgets.
I have nothing either. So. Okay, first of the new business for the board, EMS Commission Report. This has been filed with us. Our monthly report. Any comments about the report?
Excellent report. Really supportive of the case.
I agree with that.
Make a motion to receive and file.
It's been moved in second half. All in favor, say aye. Next up is Karen Seberg and Jackie Perjean with the Amelia Heart Festival.
Whatever you're comfortable with. Fine, here, we'll just lean a little. We're good. We're good. No, I think we're just here. I sent packets. Hopefully you guys received what I sent to Michelle. Just asking for support for next year for the Amelia Heart Festival. I think everything was pretty self-explanatory in there. If anybody has questions, we're happy to answer them.
I just want to stay in tune with how I've met with all the appropriations this year and just say this falls under KSA nineteen dash two one twelve of discretionary. I was curious who your board members are, please?
Advisory Board is Karen, myself, Steve Pickman, Kelly DeMerritt, Bernadette Urban.
And are you guys part of the community foundation?
We are.
Yes. Just from constituent feedback, I want to explain, you would have my support on this. This has been kind of a controversial one because constituents sometimes look as the county funding festivals versus big picture thinking. And one of the things that I'm, I've learned is depends on what lens you're looking in, because it kind of goes like the Northeast Area Agency on Aging, like our investment is small versus the ROI that the county sees. And I look at that from the festival perspective of a couple of different ways. As Friday is like our seventy-five hundred you're asking for and what that weekend entails from the Friday where I grew up living by the lake, so I know all the people that come into Atchison County from out of state, car after car after car. And then the fireworks display that's provided for everyone in Atchison County as well as all the people that travel into the county from outside. So I just think that it's important to say that in a public meeting and explain, you know, for the folks that don't believe we should fund festivals, it's looking in a different lens of what this is actually, all the hard work that goes into it and the benefit that our county sees from that. So, thank you, because I know that hosting festivals and re- relying on a volunteer base is stressful for what you guys pull off. So.
No idea. But, and I would just say that the seventy-five hundred dollars coming from county is always going towards the fireworks because we wanted to go to something specific and everything, trust me, everything goes into a different account. And so that money goes directly to fireworks, which we provide free, like you just said, for everybody in the county. And again, people on the riverfront, but also because of care, being generous enough to play the music and everything that you can watch it from a multitude of places. And we've heard some crazy places that people watch fireworks from. So. But that's what the county money is designated for is fireworks.
And just to let you know, this year, the fireworks went up a third. So just, just so you know, we're having a really good time.
We've heard that theme already this year. It's true across the board.
Really, really scary.
That the county can support your festival?
Well, I think EMS is very supportive. We had a logistics meeting this morning and went through everything with EMS and with Wes and with fire and police. And so they're very supportive in that way in kind, absolutely, always, always on site, always. Again, this morning, where do you meet us? Where would we be most efficient? What, you know, how can we help? So they're very helpful.
No questions? I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, very well.
Thank you.
Excellent for this year's event.
Thank you.
Um, thank you for having me. I'm Abby Purdue with Riverbend Habitat for Humanity in Atchison. And I just wanted to give kind of a brief overview of the Habitat programs that we have here in Atchison. And a little bit about the organization as a whole. So, so far to date, we've assisted over ninety-five families with safe, decent, and affordable housing in Atchison, whether that is through new build or whether that is housing preservation of existing housing stock. We've built a total of nine homes and the total of those homes has an appraised value of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars approximately. And those homeowners pay twelve thousand dollars in property taxes in Atchison County. And so we are addressing social determinants of health through our program in addition to eliminating code violations and or blighting influences to improve neighborhoods. So one of our programs is the home preservation program, and that is to improve existing housing stock. So we are doing repairs to homes that not only have minor maintenance, deferred maintenance needs, but also much larger structural and more urgent needs such as roofs and major system replacement. And one of the things that our program utilizes is other resources that are available for homeowners. And that would include the USDA's Rural Development five oh four grant slash loan program. And so that program, if an applicant is over the age of sixty-two, they can qualify for a grant that would help them offset the cost. Or if they are under sixty-two, it would strictly be a loan, but it's at a very low interest rate. So it makes a lot of the very large projects very affordable for homeowners and take some of that burden of the initial cost off. And one of the requirements of these programs, Habitat and the five oh four program, is current property taxes. And that is where we've really struggled with applicants for our programs is number one, property taxes being current all years. And also valid homeowner's insurance. We have found that to be one of the biggest barriers to service for homeowners. And a new program out right now is the KHRC Kansas Homeowners Assistance Fund, which that was implemented just in April to assist homeowners that have experienced hardship due to COVID. So the primary goal was to help homeowners with delinquent mortgage payments, property taxes, utilities, things that homeowners fell behind on due to COVID, whether it was loss of job or just general hardship. And, and the, the requirement there is that the hardship must be demonstrated after January first, twenty twenty. So our homeowners that have back property taxes prior to those years are seeing that those are property taxes aren't eligible for assistance because they're prior to January first, twenty twenty. So we're assisting them in that area and helping them with applications and moving them through the process. What I'm looking for with the county is a partnership to help address some of these issues and how we can work together so that we can assist more property owners here in the county. Because there's funding available for Atchison County. I've never had applicants that have exceeded the income requirements. That's typically not the problem. But there are other barriers that if we could address those and work together on them, I think we could see more benefits for these homeowners.
What barriers?
The property taxes. If we could figure out a way to ensure that property taxes, I have property tax problems in terms of, like, for instance, with the COVID years. Their COVID years will be paid, but they'll have back taxes that exist prior to the COVID years. So they're not eligible for assistance to pay those, but their payments went towards current years versus the oldest years. So if there was a way to ensure that when they're on a payment plan, those payments go to the oldest debt first, then they're more eligible for current assistance programs because those, those are the qualifying years versus oldest debt.
I'm just trying to put that into juxtaposition with what we passed in twenty eighteen when we had changed how we applied our sales, our property tax.
And that's one of the things, I obviously being new, I was trying to understand as well. Whereas based on the resolution in two thousand and eighteen, the Board of County Commissioners of Atchison, Kansas desired to require those wishing to exercise the right of redemption as provided per KSA seventy-nine twenty-four oh one A one and KSA seventy-nine twenty-four oh one A two to pay the taxes and interest for the most current delinquent year first. And so I guess I want to try to understand the thinking behind that too, because if I'm behind since two thousand and fifteen and I get a five hundred dollar bonus check and I come up here, I thought it would go toward the oldest first. And I mean, the goal would be to get current, but start at the oldest versus knock me off the, the list if I pay current and have this big gap in between from fifteen to twenty-two.
Maybe it would be a good place for you to.
The, the reason for it was that we discovered there were several people that were keeping their real estate taxes somewhere between two and three and four years delinquent. And then when we'd get ready to file a tax sale, they would come in and pay the oldest one to keep property off the tax sale. So they were perennially at least two years delinquent. And of course, those are the properties that cause the most work to be done by all the departments that have to deal with collection of taxes. The legislature, I'm not really sure why, but they granted a different, they imposed actually a different rule in Wyandotte and Johnson Counties, as I recall, that in those counties that had the collection has to go to the most recent taxes that are due. And the reasoning is if they go to the most recent years' taxes, then someone would have to pay all of the taxes to keep it out of the tax sale. To keep out of a, the next tax sale. The so the advisability of doing that is a legislative function in the twenty eighteen, this board decided that they wanted to have that be the default in Atchison County and about the charter resolution.
So in order to go to a residential tax sale, they have to be three years delinquent, is that right?
It has to be delinquent by three years. So it doesn't, doesn't mean you have to have three unpaid years. You have to have some tax that is at least delinquent by three years.
Okay.
So it could be one year of tax.
So if it's applied to the most current, you still have since two thousand and fifteen delinquent, so it's still on the tax sale?
It could be, yeah. Yes, it definitely could be. But there's also a statute that allows the Treasury to accept partial payments and entering the pay agreements. And you, I don't know, I haven't talked to her about this issue, but you might be able to, she might be able to work with you to come up with a, a payment agreement that accomplishes that. So I don't know, we'll talk with her and I.
I, I've just talked to homeowners that I've worked with and typically they're unaware of how the payments are necessarily applied. So they're not necessarily, they're on a payment plan for, let's say, two thousand dollars. They're paying twenty dollars, two hundred dollars, whatever it is at a time. They're not necessarily aware to what tax year half or whatever that it's being applied to.
Homeowners that I have payment plans, that is in the agreement that they have, that that will be adhered to the Charter Resolution two thousand and eighteen oh one. And we do explain that to anyone that we have payment plans with, it will go to the most current delinquent year first. The partial payments will be applied in that order.
So they don't have the option to pay oldest first?
No. And that is because we had a reoccurring problem with especially specific properties, but overall, people being habitually three years behind. And when it's delinquent, it's not delinquent until a year after that it's due, it actually becomes delinquent. So it's almost four years that people were letting these taxes ride before they were bothering to come in and pay in either a partial or a full year of the oldest. So there was definitely a plan to try to get these taken care of and to get some of this money off the books.
Right, absolutely.
It's September first following of the year.
Okay. It wasn't a full year.
Right, not quite full year, but it's September first. That doesn't help you with your solution?
Thank you.
But it's, it helps to identify why, why this was done and that there was actually a reasoning for it. I mean, because if there was no good reasoning for it, it wouldn't be
Right. I understand.
More easily solved.
Right. Well, is there a way to work together that this could be because my understanding with rural development at the USDA, they won't even, they'll examine payment plans, but they won't necessarily take payment plans either. So that's ruling out a lot of people that don't have these funds. I mean, and it's not necessarily like COVID related, you know, it's just, I have a lot of people in Atchison that need large projects like roofs. And if they're on a tax payment plan, the concern is always if they default and that gets, you know, to a tax sale, the USDA has a lien on, I mean, it, it gets messy, as you can imagine. So they're always very cautious about payment plans and property taxes being delinquent as well. So any way that we can kind of wrap our arms around this as, you know, a community and with organizations that can help assist homeowners with this, the county, just to help more people, I think is ultimately my goal in all of it.
Yeah, that's admirable. So, yeah.
And I don't know what the answer is. I don't know if there's foundations that could help taxpayers concurrent or individuals. It, it, it has to take community to solve.
It does.
And I, I run into Habitat people all over the world. And I know if you go to Clive Reenie, he's the first volunteer of Habitat Humanity Talks a lot, or motivation speaker.
Oh, okay.
So he's a friend of mine. But I will tell you that I think, I don't know how much money you're talking about, but foundations available in the community to.
The problem is always, it gets very convoluted in public funds assisting homeowners with things such as tax.
I was thinking like the Atchison Foundation, that's not a problem.
Oh, no, I have not approached them on how that would work in terms of funding assistance. Because as I mentioned, I've had homeowners that it's a shame that their property taxes are what the barrier is, the hurdle is. And it's such, you know, a small a small problem in the grand scheme of, you know, needing a new roof on your house because your roof is about to collapse and that's your only option. You are homeless if you do not have a safe place to sleep that night. So it's one of those things where I think we as a community need to address it and say, this is an ongoing problem. How can we assist more people? How can we work together? Other like foundations, organizations that have private funds set aside to help kind of lead.
So how much money is, let's say, the people you work with currently, how much tax do we have, do you know?
Ten thousand probably in the couple of families I have that are applying for assistance. And we're in. We're kind of in a waiting game. So how it typically works is you know, with multiple programs like this, dividing, devising a plan of where they apply first. So if they're eligible for the Kansas Homeowners Assistance Fund for, like, let's get the property taxes covered by that first. So let's get them current. Then let's move to a Habitat program or a five oh four program to help them from there. But we have to address the barrier, which is the property taxes first, which is where I come to you with the problem of the oldest taxes that then are not eligible for that assistance. So then we're right back at the start.
I want to say this really carefully because I hope you it's our best tax policy to do it the way we're doing. I don't know if we can make exceptions for situations or not with that policy.
And I'm still trying to understand. So it's the best for us because we're applying the payments to the newest and accruing interest on the oldest? Is that?
No, we're, we're trying to get people to pay their taxes by not letting them pay the oldest first to get out the tax.
When you have a three-year trigger, basically.
And this has happened with commercial properties as well as homeowners. And some of them give to fifty, sixty thousand dollars. They'll run down and pay eight thousand dollars for the oldest one in the north of Texas.
And in the, in, Casey, just to touch on that too, we've had people that have actually invested money instead of paying their taxes because they can draw more on the interest than actually paying the taxes. And they know how to play that game so that they are continually, this was prior to, to this resolution. People would stay just three years in arrears and then they would pay that fourth year. And this has completely changed the game for us in our office. I think once we stay diligent with the tax sales and this, like, I, I think it's, it's been a game changer. And unfortunately, it is something that affects situations like this, which I hate, but I mean, if we could think of a solution, but I'm not sure how to do that by making an exception. But that's up for you guys too.
Right. Well, I didn't know if, if there's a way, because in order to apply them to the current year, they have to be on a payment plan, is that correct? Like, or, or an agreement with you in your office or no?
Well, they could come in and pay any part of it, go to the most current.
The most current delinquent year. So when we take a partial pay, right now, we're still putting it on to twenty twenty.
Okay. And if, can they request to put it toward their oldest?
Or no? No, we, we have, we have this handy.
Okay.
Because we have, and a lot of those are the, you know, like, one of them was our, one of our habitual people that Pat and I have dealt with a lot. That person consistently will try to call my office and pay the older years. He tries to get someone on the phone who will just apply that payment because it's such a headache for him because he wants to keep his properties off of the tax sale.
Gotcha. I was just trying to find, like, if you had people that you were working with me and you told me, okay, go pay this and tell Congress to apply here, but that can't happen, I guess.
The horror recently, the penalty wasn't that high. Penalty's been increased. But a lot of people took it and they, hey, this is a cheap loan.
Absolutely, yeah.
You know, so.
Well, and that's.
Causing you the pain.
Well, and the penalty, I mean, it, I, I get that and I really do. I mean, I fully support that there needs to be some penalty there for some of these homeowners that aren't trying to, I mean, I understand also there are those that are trying to skirt the system and then those that have legitimate hardships. For the ones that are in legitimate hardship in crisis, that penalty sometimes is what's going to bury them though, deeper and deeper into a hole that they cannot get themselves out of. So it's also a balance on that. I would like if there was any sort of way that maybe we could work together because obviously some of the habitual ones, they're multiple property owners. So those are not the people we are working with at Habitat. They are typically owner occupied, single family property owners. So if there was a way that there, you know, we could work with them in a different capacity than the standard payment plan because they're not or they're not already on a habitual offender list.
We don't have an habitual.
Well.
Please help me understand this. I, you, you, you gave a couple of examples and I don't want to go into the specifics, but this one owed for nineteen, for fifteen, sixteen, nineteen, twenty. So your grant would pay what?
So the Kansas Housing or Homeowners Assistance Fund only covers delinquencies that are COVID-related hardships after January first of twenty twenty. So those previous years will not get covered. So January first, twenty twenty eligible, anything prior, not.
So your grant would be this, this one that the twenty twenty taxes total was three hundred and thirty-five dollars? So that, that's what you would pay?
It's not me. It's through Kansas Housing Resources. Yeah. And they work with homeowners individually right now. Home, homeowners, including mortgage assistance, the dollar amount has increased from thirty-five thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars. So in theory, most Atchison property owners could have property taxes wiped out for back taxes for twenty and twenty-one through this program. But it's not going to solve the problem of those back years. But if they're applying, if they're on a payment plan and they're applying payments to the most current years, those, those years are current, they're not eligible for the previous years. So these homeowners are just kind of left in a lurch.
And I, I don't know if this would be possible to do, but could, would Habitat be part of an agreement that to hold the, that money and when the other taxes were paid to pay it over?
Like, or does escrow?
The twenty twenty tax, whatever that grant was, to hold that and when person completes their payment plan, then that would be paid in?
Is there a timeframe on payment plans? Do, I mean, is it a set timeframe, like so long to get current or is it based on dollar amount, years owed?
I think all those things, but I think typically they're, what, two to three years gone?
Yes, our payment plans are devised in a way that they would become current within three years. So the payment amount for the payment plan is the amount that's owed, the delinquency amount that's owed, and then a current amount added together so that within those three years, they are current. Because we're trying to help them to, to dig out of those habitual holes and not stay there. So.
Can I go back to your example? I said twenty twenty taxes is three hundred and some dollars. Well, and this, what, these were some, this is one example, just, this one example. Yeah, it's three hundred and some dollars. Three hundred and thirty-five. So, and they're, they're delinquent for three years? Well, they, actually, the half of twenty twenty were paid. And on this one, twenty nineteen half were paid. Well, they, actually, the half of twenty twenty were paid, you know, on this one, twenty nineteen half were paid. So how much money are you talking about? How much money is it to them to pay off all those taxes? Uh, well, the older ones are a little more because they were the whole year, not not just half, so. Seventeen hundred dollars, eighteen hundred dollars. On this one, but there there are some of these examples, they're they're going to. No, I'm sure that particular one, it seems like. There'd be ways of raising money to pay that seventeen hundred dollars within the community. Right, and you're a fundraiser, I don't know how hard it is to raise money.
Right, like I said, it's just, it's hard um sometimes for. I mean, even as another taxpayer to want to pay another person's tax debt. I mean, everyone kind of views that as, you know, something you accrued on your own. Um, so that's where these public assistance programs really kind of fill that void.
And I think that's absolutely true because that's what we were getting into trouble that we weren't having these. Evenly applied in this habitual, non payers were were continuing on. On insisting on doing it that way, still want to do it that way and until we changed it to this mode, we weren't getting ahead of it, so.
Right.
So um, I think it's your assessment is correct. But uh, I don't know, I'm I'm still, um, if we could think of something new, I mean, I'm I'm game to listen.
I'm open to, you know, furthering the conversation and brainstorming some ideas. How we can all work together with the Treasurer's Office um and see what would work best.
Have you understood we can't make appropriate.
Right.
These people.
Yep, exactly.
So it's, it's, I think it has to be something unique, but I think, I I don't think it can be done. But it might take other people in the community to to pony up since.
Yep, that works.
Let's keep the communications open.
I appreciate that.
Thank you for coming.
And I know you guys do a lot of that, you kind of, in a way.
We are, thank you, thank you.
Next on the agenda is. So Sherry Beckford County Attorney, courtroom technology, PO approval, and Sherry isn't here today, she's busy in the court. So uh, this is a project which has been. They need for the courts, uh, audio and recording equipment, evidence presentation equipment. And the total amount of this PO is sixty two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars and twenty nine cents. To electronic offices, office systems, and do I hear a motion to approve PO?
I'll second.
Spend a minute, a second, any other quick questions or?
Uh, just, it also includes the online and in-person court hearing integration technology.
All in favor, say aye. Next up, West Ladder Code Red Renewal Approval.
Good afternoon, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I have two purchase orders before the commission today. The first one is the renewal um of the code red system, which the city of Atchison and Atchison County partner to provide that to our citizens. And that grant or the county section of that is paid for with the emergency management grant that we receive every year. Um, and that PO is in the total of ten thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, as everybody knows, that's our emergency alert system uh countywide. But the city is paying that portion, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
We skip somebody or. I just read eight point two, eight point three, Jeanette, show more.
No.
Yeah, this is why I downloaded it.
This must be.
But, no, it should be under ten point one.
What's that?
That one, the one you're, that's an older one, so it should be under. But Michelle updated it since then, probably.
Ten point one.
Okay.
Okay, Wes. Okay, and the second PO for you um is the mass installation of the nine one one address signs. So the blue address signs in the rural areas of the county. Um, traffic management completed that project and they're getting me the final paperwork. Once they do so, then we'll issue them payment um total uh for that PO is thirty eight thousand. Four twenty three sixty six, and there are still some signs that a run bridge will be installing. Um, that we found that we missed throughout the process, but we'll get those installed, um, do you have any questions on that?
No.
I will go approve.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor, say aye. That's just three to zero, and if anyone listening has needs to sign, please let commissioners or Wes know.
Yes, if we miss anybody, please let us know and we will get you a sign. Thank you.
Um, Kim Glover. Dead opening for UTV for.
Just one?
Give the mic just one.
Um, this is from Heritage Tractor, um, twenty nine thousand was their total.
And what accessories?
The sprayer, the gator itself, and the um plow attachment.
So, which we expected something close to that.
Yes, and these are the ones that had some on order and a couple of them were not accounted for, so.
This is available now.
Should be pretty soon. So.
It's not available now.
I, they're on order, so they're in the process. I don't have an exact date yet because I didn't put dibs on it, so I don't know. Um, but I would like to be able to do that since there was only the one bid is to get ahold of him and tell him that we do want that and can I bring a purchase order next week?
This morning, the workshop, you said there are people who had.
No, I said he had a shipment coming and two of them were not. Yeah, yeah, just two were unspoken. Uh, and this event, yes. Uh, I would make a motion to approve the twenty nine thousand um dollars to Heritage Tractor. Uh, for the gator with the Noxious Weed sprayer and uh snow blade. For use in the county.
It's been moved, moved in second, all in favor, say aye. And that money is already in in the account, so it's not a new.
Yep, no, correct, thank you.
Michelle Phillips, approval of record disposal.
I love the paper upstairs, but it is basically just a disposal order, um, I can help and explain what it is. It's just a disposal record for our twenty twenty primary election results. Just so that way um we can just kind of keep clearing out our shelves, our shelves. So per statute, um, it's twenty two months for any federal election. So, and that's, I think, K A R twenty three two one twenty two, I believe, don't quote me. But I have the paper, I know I'll be going upstairs later. And um, I'll grab it though, and if you guys approve that, then that way you guys can sign it. And I, we just need approval to get that taken care of.
But you still retain it digital copy of the results.
Yeah, we have the, we have the permanent abstract that we keep in our our book. That's just the ballots, um, just anything related to that primary election that we can. Which is twenty two months is just the ballots.
I think I wish I could allow the clerk to destroy the primary records of twenty twenty election.
I would second that.
It's been moved in second, all in favor, say aye. That's just three to zero. County Council.
Sorry, may I interrupt? Mr. Branton is here for Juneteenth, I did not have him on the agenda, I didn't get that information. So for the twenty twenty three budget.
Okay.
Request, if if you guys don't mind, before the county council's update. Yeah, I just, sorry, I didn't want you not to keep waiting.
Come on up, come on up.
First, I'd like to thank you for your time and. Just allowing me to speak on behalf of Juneteenth, we are a community event. That we celebrate the emancipation proclamation. And this isn't your first rodeo, y'all, you already know pretty much what we're about. Therefore, I'd just like to say that, thank you for your support in the past. Is because of people like you that we can continue to do this and keep it free. And to Pita, St. Joe, um, St. Louis, most places, you have to pay for the vendors. For the food, the pop, what have you, in our community, it's all free because we, as a committee. Juneteenth, Atchison, Juneteenth Committee, we raise money. So that in fact, we can keep it free for everyone in the community. Therefore, uh, our mission, our motto, unity in the community, that's what we're trying to achieve. So if you would consider this, that we would love for you guys to remain the sponsor. I know you care about us and we say thank you for the years gone by. But we would ask you to continue to support us in our mission of unity in the community. As, we're not asking anything more, anything less, none of us get paid. Uh, a lot of commissions, they have paid uh people that do their bidding for them. Ours is just an act of love, we do because we love this community and we want everybody to have a fair shake at life. And love, so um, I'm not going to take a lot of your time, you know what we're about. Please, if you would, consider keeping us on your budget if you would please.
Thank you very much.
And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Who is, sorry, if I could just, um, this is discretionary for KSA nineteen dash two one two, who are your board members?
Uh, our chairperson is Nicole Harris, our vice chair is Laquita Cluke. I am the treasurer, my assistant is Shelby Ross. And then we have a secretary, Rosalind Stillman. And then we have an assistant secretary, Phyllis Downing, and then we have our food director. Cluke, Silas Cluke, and um. That's about it as far as our board.
Okay, and your ask was, was it a thou?
I think it was two thousand.
Two thousand.
Yes, it's all possible, I would take five dollars. I I'm saying that we can exist as we exist because of the donations that we give because of people like you. So whatever we can get, you don't look a gift horse in the mouth if you will.
I appreciate it, are you guys part of the um, the uh, community foundation, the Atchison area?
Yes, now, okay. Yes.
Awesome.
Chamber of Commerce.
Awesome.
Were participating.
Sounds good, well, you're, you pull off a heck of an event, that's for sure.
Thank you so much, it's because of people like you that we can do that, and for that I say thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, have a good day.
You too, you too.
Thanks for the review.
Yeah, sorry.
And that's council updates, all right, well, the first thing on there is the discussion. County Road five fifty. Uh, and so I'm going to turn it over to Roger again to start that discussion.
Um, we maintain the county's Geo database and as you know, fifteen years ago, there were a lot of things that we just didn't know. Everything was paper records and and that database just becomes more and more valuable all the time and. Becomes a little more accurate as time goes on. Uh, the the heirs of the Bolin came in to speak to me. Uh, asking about a road across the Purdue property across eh to their property. Uh, and we showed nothing on the road record about it. Um, that's not unusual. Uh, they were pretty insistent and, you know, if there's nothing there, we can't show it. Uh, I also spoke with Mr. Purdue about it and there were little differences of opinion on what it was. As time went on, um, I have Jack in our office continually scan documents and work them and he. God, not this Jack, Jack Paris, who is the uh.
I'm not enough technician in my office.
Uh, he was scanning documents and he came across a nineteen fifty road dedication. Uh, of called Road five fifty, that was the road into that property. Um, I informed uh after reviewing the documents, taking a look at it. It appeared that at one time there was a uh a dedication of that road. Now, please mind you that that in the beginning, what we do with every road is I look at. Uh, the road records to see what I can find, I look at old plat maps and it didn't show up on the nineteen fifties and I look at. Uh, at maps of uh the original parcel lines from the eighties. The last parcel lines that were hand drawn because if if I haven't seen it in those three. I have to wonder why it would be there, and it didn't show up on any of those records. And so then at some point we found a dedication. Uh, and I called the Bolin heirs and they came and talked to me about it and I. And I uh sent message to Charlie Purdue through Abby who was here earlier and he came in and spoke about it. And uh, and I showed them what I had, I spoke with the county counselor. Um, now, keep in mind, old road records like this are not unusual. We deal with these all the time, we dealt with it recently on two fifty fourth where they had a little water crossing that didn't show up as a right of way on ours. And through the process, we fixed it and everyone agreed that it is where it is and. And we went ahead and did that, uh, we've seen it with uh Mr. Shepherd, we've seen it with Don Drive, we've seen it. Um, you know, we've just got roads all over that people come in and start asking questions about, uh, this is not unusual. I spoke with the appraiser, I don't just put things on the map or split properties or change properties. I'm the database guy, I don't make those decisions. Uh, so I spoke with the the appraiser, she didn't know that she had adequate authority to put it on, I spoke with Pat. Um, Pat didn't know that we had adequate authority just to go ahead and put it on. Uh, and since it was not everyone's same opinion as to the value of that road and how it was to be used. Um, it's one of those things where I thought best that it come back to the commission for them to advise me. Whether to add it to our database or not and have this road on, now, the road was created nineteen fifty. Um, by petition and neither. Uh, and Purdue's did not actually sign the petition in the beginning to create that road across their property, uh, they did not sign it. Uh, in fact, it crossed two properties now, uh, one of the two properties that it crossed is now owned by uh the Bolin property. Uh, but. It was created just twenty feet wide and the location where it was created. Does not exactly match where it shows it to be right now, that's not unusual. We have a lot of roads that aren't where they were originally created, maybe the road has moved and then maybe the road never went in where it was. Uh, but the original said they were going to try and create the road where it currently existed. And then there were some other issues that that Pat might want to speak to, I sent you an illustration of it. And 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 that explains why we're here with this. Is because I don't just put things back on the map without someone being aware of that and especially. Uh, any issue that might come back to you in another manner, I always say, before any changes are made, I have to have.
So, uh, I don't know if you all can see, but this is the. Aerial photograph and you can see the the three white lines there, that's the, there's a. Couple of, that's what GIS took from the uh. Legal descriptions that were done by the surveyors, and so. How this came about is the initial petition um just kind of says I want a road generally traveling in this direction. And then that's followed up by the the county surveyor goes out and the county surveyor laid out this line here. As being the road, this part about it being off a little bit is uh. Also not uncommon in our records, there are, there's some case law and that's uh. Probably has to do with the improvement in the uh. Instruments that they're using and then this particular one, it might be because of the whether this first call. Should have was perpendicular or whether it was on a slant as the road is, but anyway, we don't really need to resolve that. Case law is pretty clear that the the road. as the road is. But anyway, we don't really need to resolve that. But case law is pretty clear that the, the road is where the road is. And that's also evidence of where the road is supposed to be. But you can see, it kind of mirrors where the road goes. The, the procedure is the, the, it's presented to the board of county commissioners and the board of county commissioners looks at it and said, yeah, we think this would be a utility. They point three disinterested persons as road viewers. And the road viewers go out, they meet with the road surveyor. They give notice to the world and to the adjacent landowners that we're going out there to look at this on a specific day and look at the particular circumstances that are there. And they went out there and did that. And the owner of, of this property, the Huddle property, showed up at that and said, guys, I don't want this road going here by my house. I, I will give you, if you turn, make turn the road and have it go up north and then have it go over here to what used to be the boundary line. I'll just give you that if you make the road go that way. And the, the viewers looked at that and said, yeah, that looks like a good compromise here. So that's what we're gonna do. So the, the road as accepted by the board finally and laid out is here to here, over to here. So it stops here at the, this boundary line. And it went over to what used to be the boundary line. I have no idea. And I don't want the board to hear any evidence or make any decision about it. But I have no idea whether this road was actually ever used. Some people, and I don't, it doesn't really matter whether it was or, well, it does matter for, for, it does matter for one purpose. And that is, if it was never opened, then someone would have to go through that process to, to open it again. Or would have to go through a process to open it. If it had been open at one time and it just hasn't been used, if somebody wanted it to be maintained by the township, they would be required to bring it up to township standards before the township would have the responsibility for maintaining that. It will make a big difference to the current landowner if you are planning to subdivide this property. This is an issue that you're going to need to resolve. And that is how the owner anything over here will have access. That doesn't take any action by the board of county commissioners. You can do that through an easement, if you have an easement with a description in it that you're satisfied with and your, your buyer or buyers or are comfortable with. So I, I think I'm pretty confident in the opinion that from here to here, from what's in reference to this boundary line, that there is an open road. I also don't know the extent to which the township has ever maintained that. And again, I don't know if that's a discussion that you need to be, that you need to resolve. If there are those unanswered questions, then those are probably best resolved through a court, a court proceeding either in mandamus or for quiet title. Anyway, that's, I think, the background. I had suggested to Roger, when we were talking about the map, that this part here should be, my suggestion was that should be changed to show that it is a road. I also suggested that this and this both be put on in some sort of cross hatch so that someone looking at the map would know, hey, there's a problem here. Or there's an issue here. I better investigate further. Because we didn't want to lull anybody into thinking that the whole way was an open road forever that they could rely on, particularly somebody who might buy the land further this way to think that they could use this path to get there. I have no idea. Those are questions for.
Let me ask you a question.
So why can't you just go up here? Someone could. Someone need, someone would need to file a petition to establish a road there and.
This is not a road?
No.
Oh, no.
Okay, so this is a road?
No.
No.
These white lines are.
Yeah, there's already a road there.
Okay.
It goes back to two houses.
That's a.
Well, I understand. Yeah, I just.
Yeah, those aren't seeing these lines, I would deal with the road.
Since you said to go up to that, how do you line the path?
Those are boundary lines that you would just assume to be the path of a new road. But they are not yet.
That's begging the place to make, yes, yeah.
Again, I think you said, who pays the cost for opening that? If somebody wants that open.
Right.
They would need to bring it up to, to the township standards and before the township had any responsibility. So presumably whoever wanted it to be opened.
I can give you some history on that if you don't.
Well, I, I'm extremely interested in it, but I don't want to give the impression that Board of County Commissioners has the authority to decide these factual disputes. If there are factual disputes, I don't know if there are any. Because there really isn't a process for them to do that.
So, okay, I, I would just, I, I do have an attorney that is helping. He wasn't able to be here today. And he has told me that it, and I've been told that by a couple of people, that it is a legal road. The road coming in. The other road is no longer used.
From there.
Yes, to that, there. That it says to our property. That is the only access to the two houses back there. And so my question is, is, i- if it's a legal road, why is it such a problem? I mean, I think is the issue that the maintenance part of it? I mean, we're wondering about.
I don't mean to, I, I don't know that it is a problem. And I, is that I don't know whether the township has maintained it, is maintaining it, refuses to maintain it. I don't know whether Mr. Purdue is saying that's not a road, stay off it. I don't know that it is a problem.
I thought that's what this meeting was for, is to kind of try to resolve some of this. Because everybody's here and present.
Well, they're here, they could, they, they could say, but I don't know. I've never heard that, I've never heard that someone tried to exclude someone from the road. Did anyone try to exclude somebody?
No one has, we're, the property is for sale right now. And that's why, the main reason that we're here is because we have the property for sale and potential buyers are asking about the road. And we need to be able to tell them something about as far as the maintenance goes, who maintains it? Because it was always maintained by the township up until twenty twenty one is the way I understand it. Greg Garing, I spoke to him and he maintained it for many years. And then he said the man before him maintained it. We, it's been our, we have known it to be maintained.
Ever since my folks own the property.
Okay.
It was always maintained up to the, up to the line, the property line.
Are you Miss Owen?
Yes.
I have no reason to doubt that.
So then what's the next step we need to do is that talk to the township? Because when I spoke to the township, they told me to come to, to the county commissioners. That's what I was told from going, when we went to a township. It was actually a phone township meeting during COVID. And they said they didn't have any authority.
Well, to just cut through, does the township maintain it's not a road or are they not maintaining it?
Trustee out there. And I come in, Roger called me early last year.
Right.
And I come in, I talked to him and I asked him about that road. And as far as his records show them, that my private driveway.
Right.
And so I haven't been maintained. I mean, if it's just a private driveway, that's not for me to maintain.
I absolutely agree. And I, Roger addressed that at the beginning, that when we looked initially, we didn't, we, we didn't find the record. Since then, and we, nobody said, one of the things, one of the wonderful things that Roger and Jack are doing is getting all of our road records into a better database, like Geo, whatever.
I've been saying three, four times, probably, I wrote that one, you know? You know, you know, we've got things worked out. So all, all but this one, you know, I mean, he didn't have the records. To, you know, say absolutely, you know, one way or the other.
Okay.
You know, and I don't have a problem maintaining it. You know, township hurts. But I'm not gonna put money out on a private driveway.
And then there's also the, the landowner over whose land the path travels.
Well, um, this petition that was made for the road was in nineteen fifty. And my folks bought the Hennessy place and the rest of this stuff in here probably in nineteen fifty one or two. So, and I've been associated with it ever since, and I'm seventy one. When I was big enough, of course, when Ann Wees's mom and dad bought the place back there. You would go from the road to ten and cut across. But now they've got to realize that the road that's there today has been modified. Because when they lived over there, Ed came over one time and talked to us. Because if you can see where the Morton building is in between the two green lines there on the north side where it makes us kind of a well, if you look down, you'll see the green. That was the old road that was, anything that was in there was down there. But every time it had snow, it had drifted. So we had come over and ask if that was all right. So we, we took, took fence out and we backed off into the pasture there. And we braced that road up, up. Oh, I guess it's up probably six foot through there. So it wouldn't drift anymore. But, okay, now, when they bought the property, they did not have the Huddle property, which is on the right side of the green, the second green mark over. And you can see a shed there. That's where the Huddle House used to sit. And right across that, yeah.
Here?
Yes.
That was the Huddle House set there. Right across the road out where those three lines are drawn across there for the road layout, used to be the barn. And I can remember all this stuff. I was probably about seven, eight years old, maybe a little older. But anyway, Ed and Pauline bought the older house back here, which is not showing up on that map. But anyway, the road, they come over and right there where the green lines go down where supposedly was drawn in for the township road. Then it went down to the corner. It made a real sharp ninety degree turn, which it's showing. Then it went out behind where Ed built his new home or the home that it subsequently. And then when it came over, but then it came around over by where the grainery is, which is over there by where those three lines end up. Well, then I can't remember exactly because I used to ride my go kart over there. I was over there all of the time at their place. But anyway, when it get bad, when you came back on that north-south section and came back up onto the, the road there, it was real steep and it was just almost impossible. And then Ed bought the Huddle place. Then that's when he decided he wanted to change and make these driveway come out. But to my knowledge, all of that township road was banded.
The, the part that goes up and over?
Well, that's still, like I said, when, and Joe was working for the Cook Boys, whenever we put that, all that new fence in. And we put new fence in over on the, our property side. So that old road is still there. And it's on your property. Okay. But that, and as far as the township being in there, I mean, of course, when Ed and Pauline lived there and they were of an age, we always kept that road open because we didn't want any chance that something would happen over there that it couldn't get out. So we, Matt and I always kept that road. It was always maintained and kept open. And we robbed it. We had Merle Mercer that used to truck all rock. He saw tons and tons of rock on there.
In front of my grandma's house?
No.
No, the other.
The part out here that's, that's listed as being our drive.
Okay.
We've, we've robbed that time after time. They'll start and talk tons of rock over there. And like, like I was telling them, our feet set up over there are pastures and stuff. When we come out, we bring, you know, maybe we'd have mud on the tires and stuff. So we always kept it rock. Now I noticed today I was down there and it's since the heavy rain, we got us that's washed across there. But we've maintained it ever for a long time now. I will say this, and I don't know if this is a nice good place or not. But anyway, we went over there one day and I spent day after day with that. Anyway, we worked over and we missed. Really, we had gravel hauled in and everything. And we graded it and really had it up in shape. And I don't know, there was Dicky Reynolds that run one of, run the grader. Of course, Bob Gilmore was one of the old time guys. Anyway, for some reason, he decided to go in there. And he went back in there and messed. He graded, let's say that. And it didn't quite meet its specs. And Ed told him, and I was right there with him. And he told him, he said, don't ever come back on this road again. So that's, I don't know. That's when all this, but.
That's the later part of the road, not the first part of the road.
No, that, no, that's all of the road. He was on all of it. He went back there. So, but Bob, Bob was some relation to Ed or Pauline. I don't know how that was family wise. But anyway, that's the reason. And but as far as the township being in there, it's been years since the township's been over there.
Mr. Garing, I spoke with Greg Garing, of course, I'm not here, but I spoke with him multiple times about, and he told me that he would maintain and, and that he had been there for twenty or twenty-five years. And that was right, I think, before you, it was before you. I mean, he told me he had maintained that road.
Greg had never served on that board that long.
I don't know how long, but that's what, that's, I thought he said around twenty years or something like that.
But as far as the upkeep on the road, I'd say at least fifteen, twenty years we've done and maintained on the road. And we used to, of course, we used to rent all that great property, which, you know, they're talking about the Bowlins, but it's actually great. To me, it's the old great property. We, we used to rent all that back there, the pasture. And we keep that all raveled up through there too. But I don't know, I just, I never thought we'd run into this mess. But the only thing, and I will say this, when Ed and Pauline were back there and then there was, I can't remember the gentleman that was the artist. He stayed over there at grandma's house.
Yeah.
But, you know, and he was there to kind of help with Ed and Pauline. But and then they're brothers there now. But I just don't want to see, I, you know, you're talking about roughly a little over, I'd say three eighths of a mile, maybe something like that. Maybe not that far from two ten over to that section line. The green lines are section lines is what they are. But anyway, I just don't want, I, I, I'm not in favor of, you know, especially if it comes down to, I gotta give them right of ways. I don't want a whole lot of people going through there. And I don't think the rest of you, if you were in my position going through like where the feed pens are and everything, whether you'd not been driving through, you either.
Is there any other way to do it? There's no other way to get there?
It's our only access to that property. And it has been for, they have had access to that property. There, the, the one house back there is from the eighteen hundreds. And I thought we were on the same page. We spoke many times, Tom.
Well, I know.
I don't understand.
And like I told you, Kathy, because of what I know grandma and grandpa thought of you, I'd do anything for you. But but I just.
This is a road, this is a road to get to our property. Was to get to our property. It's impressive, impressive. We do, there's nothing we do to that road. No, there are cows on either side. What, how could somebody hurt the property by riding back there?
Well, you don't know who, you know, like I said, when grandma and grandpa was back there or even the artist was back there.
But has there been a problem ever? Has it ever been a problem driving back, driving through your property?
Well, we had problems back there. So we don't want to go with that. But I, I mean, I just don't want all that traffic. I mean, and then what if they come back there? I mean, and then what if they come back there and if they don't get this other road, they haven't got access back there anymore?
What other road?
Well, I mean, if you're going to subdivide that
We're not, we aren't planning to subdivide. We have it on, right now, we have it for sale for one owner on the whole entire property. We don't have plans to subdivide.
I was told to ask, is it on a section line?
No.
If it's not, okay. If not, well, I guess the rest is irrelevant. I was told to ask, is, has there been a vacation ordinance recorded? And if not, it is a right of way. And it is Kansas law for right of ingress, egress. So I don't know how they're going to get to their property. It's, it'll be landlocked there. And that's, I don't think you guys want that.
Well, that's now the understanding.
I, I, I want to explain again, you're sort of making a plea to, to me or the board, is that they have the authority to solve this problem. They don't, and I don't. I, I agree with, I, I don't disagree with anything that you said. But if there's a dispute about whether or not there was, whether the road was opened, whether the road was abandoned or something. This isn't, this board
The only part of that was, that was abandoned was the one that went around behind the house. Because when my dad bought, not legally though, first, when my dad bought, he bought first a farm in the bottom. And then the next one he bought was the one with the, the other, the older house on it. And to get to that, he had to go down the back of the property and to the other house. But then he bought the huddle farm where that road came to. So that time that he extended the road to the other houses and, or new house. And that's when it was abandoned because, because he had the property that came to the, the, he bought the huddle property, which came to the road we're talking about. So that that road was there existing and went into the property that he bought.
May, may I add another, please, three comments in? First of all, and just three little things to mention, and you can now understand why I wouldn't just put it back on. Without someone saying, yeah, let's do this. The first is, there's a handwritten note in the records that we scanned that says, damage claims were filed by Charles Purdue in the amount of five hundred dollars. It was agreed by memo and county commissioners that two hundred and fifty dollars be paid to Purdue by Walnut Township, which was in agreement with all parties concerned. Okay, that's one note that does say that it was, that Walnut Township was involved. Other than that, we get this thing about this chunk was abandoned, this chunk wasn't. All we know is we got a petition that created it and about a few weeks worth of work that was done on. Our problem is, if that's all there is, that's fine. But we don't know what we don't know. And the problem is, if there was a petition, if there was an abandonment, we don't have any of that information. And I do know that when I put things on or change things, I need to know that I have substantial amount of information and authorization to go ahead with it, or someone else is going to expect us to be liable for what we say. And so that's where we are with those issues. The third thing is that the location where the road is shown is not where the drive is that they're wanting to use. And so that that would take some form of acknowledgement or saying, we want it where it is.
No, if it's not where, exactly where it was, it's surely the way it was, since I remember it, and I'm fifty-seven from the time I could remember. I know you said, I know you said it's moved, but it isn't like it's anything significant. Do you remember it being different? Can you tell me, and you're eighty, I mean, I'm just saying, it can't be that far off. And I just don't understand when you say you don't know what you don't know. Can you, can you, please explain that?
I know that.
I was unable to call. I asked them a question. I'm just wondering, I don't understand, if you've got this doc, these documents, it say, and that say it was a road. And you're saying you don't know what you don't know. What does that mean?
How many years of county commission meetings have there been since the, since these documents? Seventy years worth? I have not been through those seventy years of commission document to know whether anything else is down the road back there. I just don't have anything that gives me anything else.
It was maintained up until last fall.
I'm, I'm not arguing. I'm just saying, I don't know what I don't know.
But would we have had, like, would my grandparents have had to close the road or something? What, how, how does it, if you, if it, if it comes, if it's a legal road and it was drawn up as a legal road and declared a legal road supposedly, then how does it become not a legal road? Would somebody have to do that? I know my grandparents would have never done that.
There would have to be a petition to vacate the road.
My, we did not do that. That was not done.
I, I don't, I don't know that. And if that's the case, then, then I think you have all the info that you need.
So then, okay, okay.
When I spoke with Janet Reese with the Keith Wilson title. And she said that if the road had been closed and an easement drawn up, it would show up on, on the deed. She looked at Mr. Purdue's deed and at this deed, there's nothing on either.
One would think that would, yeah, one would think that would happen. Mr. Purdue, can I, you said that the road was moved or part of it was?
Yeah.
Was it the whole way?
Well, we probably, it probably, when we got done, it probably shifted it maybe ten, maybe fifteen feet. Because we're, we're those to the north. We moved to the north. Because, okay, look at where those lines come across, where, where the survey was laid out for the road. Right south of the shed, or, yeah, right south of the shed, right in the middle. Look, stand over there.
So, are, are you talking, it was moved over here?
No.
Did it was a move between here and here?
Yeah, but it was that other piece that's up there. That road that's, the lines are there, has never been there. That road has never been there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking this is an error.
Okay, well, okay, now, see where, where the lines come like this and they come together south, right up in there. Okay, now go right on up above that. Right there, we know, too far. See where the green is below the road? The old road used to be down in there. And it's set quite a bit lower. And that's where the drift so bad. And so Ed asked us if it was all right if we shove that dirt down in there and make a new road. We changed that road over so that he could get through there and no problem. And also we rocked it at our own expense at that time. So that's, and this whole thing is a whole surprise to me because I, I never knew this mess existed. I really didn't. Because like I said, when Ed came out, Ed was the first one I can remember being back, Ed and Pauline. First one I remember being back there, you know? And, well, I can remember the house, you know, where that place was. But nobody ever said anything about the road.
I mean, you, you were under the understanding that it was a township road.
Well, that's what I was, I would have assumed it was, but then when we got to check it in, it wasn't. So I don't know. And I should have said, oh, my family sure as hell never closed it, if it was a township road. We sure as hell never closed it.
Yeah, I know we didn't close it. So, so, well, I don't know.
So, but anyway, that's, that's all I can say about. But I, you know, like with Kathy and them going in, I never had, you know, and Pauline, no problems at all. But if we're going to make this some kind of subdivide back there, I, I kind of just, I'm going to have to
Atkinson County does not have any subdivision requirements or regulations, so. It's what everybody happens in the future, will happen in the future. But this is only a twenty foot wide. It's not, you can't have two cars.
Well, we have to be able to sell this property because my mother bought her brother out and we owe a debt to the bank on this property. That is why it is so urgent. It's under, it's being, it's listed with Janet. And we, this is our road to the property. It has been that way since my grandparents lived there, in the nineteen, late nineteen fifties. And all of a sudden, this came up that, we've always known it to be a township, and I know Charlie, we've always known it to be a township road.
I, I never
I don't, I have
We always just, you know, we just maintained it. Ed and Pauline went back through there all the time, so I never
I do know that one thing, did maintain it for, I mean, maybe that's something we need to check into.
The maintenance part of it, when you're talking about using the, just the graded, but you talked about putting your own gravel on.
We, we raveled it, so we drug it, you know, with our own stuff, you know, we keep it out.
I, yeah, we're going to have to wrap this up because I don't
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
My mother told me that she maintained and paid for the gravel that came to her area, to our property lawn. And that the township took care of the rest of it. And I have to tell you, if somebody was stuck up there, I had, I would always call the township person and he would very willingly go and get the road open so that a caregiver could get there for her. And never, ever, until this fall, was it ever questioned or any question in my mind about that road. And I called to have somebody do something up there. And I was told it was not a township road at that time. But it has always been treated as a township road, all the years that my folks were up there.
And Pauline, you know, I have to kind of, well, I don't know how to say that.
My mother
You know, when your mother was over there.
Stretched up.
But do you remember the day that you and your husband drove in there and run the car up on top of that snowdrift that I and Matt come and got it out for you guys and opened the road? We didn't realize it had blocked. Remember that day?
That must have been a long time.
She was just before she went to
We're, we're going to have to wrap this up.
Can I just ask a question for the people that are, that I'm, you know, when agents call me and ask about this, what am I supposed to say right now?
Although we don't have a say in this, like, and we're just kind of facilitating the discussion with all of you. And then summary, listening to every party, it seems like you both agree that it used to be a township road. And if the township's not saying they're not willing to, if it's their responsibility, and everybody's shaking their heads yes, that it would be a benefit to all if you three could work out getting that in writing, that it's a township road, because there's previous documentation that the township was involved. And that would save you, Mr. Purdue, for many personal expenses of gravel on the road in the future. And you would be happy to have a road, and Charlie would be happy to have a road, and Leo would be happy to have direction on whether or not to maintain the road. So I feel like, just from listening, and again, as an outsider, I think you're all trying to accomplish the same thing, it's just in different ways.
Well, there's one thing that I want to ask, though, if we, if we have to, and I guess that goes before the commissioners. If we do, are they gonna, are you gonna have the regulations or specifications for township road? Because if you do, you're going to get into problems back there. You know what I'm saying, Leo?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because it's just not, well, the width, it's just not very wide.
Yeah, well, and then with the feet stuffed through there and everything.
Well, I hope you can find a resolution to this, so.
What would be the next step?
Well, the agreement between all, all the parties. And then I think if you could come up with some agreement, then I think you can hash out the details. I mean, I mean, how to get it. I know that you were working with Ben, you, I think.
Yes, I think Ben is going to follow up. And he couldn't make it today, and he's going to follow up with the township, I believe.
All right, okay. All right, so sorry for all of the, you bet. And I hope you can find a resolution to this, because I know it's frustrating.
It's beyond frustrating.
Do you want, do you want a copy of that?
So, but back to my question, will the township or the county, of course, all roads in the county belong to the county, right?
They belong to the public and the county is in
Yeah, but I mean, who's in charge of specifications? If you're going to have to have specifications, who's going to say, well, this road's got to be this wide? You got to have so much right of way. Who's going to make that?
Are you asking if we're going to have something?
No, but I mean, if, no, 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 no. Forget the subdivision. Let's try to get this mess up here straight. That we're talking. Okay, so if, if we do somehow try to get some agreement here, how wide would a, a road have to be?
Well, if, if you're going to do something like that where you're changing, the, the, the Board of County Commissioners in nineteen fifty made an order. And their order is that it's twenty feet wide. If you want to do something that it's a wider road, you could do that sort of agreement between yourselves. But if you want the, if you want that to be part of the official road, someone would have to file a petition with the Board of County Commissioners and go through that process.
Well, it's not, you're misunderstanding. It's not the question, do I want to widen them? But if we've got to make it to where it meets township.
Criteria.
Criteria.
What are, what is the criteria? Is that what you're trying to ask?
Yeah.
And I think the only place that would come into effect is if somebody wanted to reopen this part that goes up north across. Because the part that's across there, it looks to me like it's open and being traveled.
Yeah.
And if there's some argument that the road's in the wrong place, someone would need to file something in district court on either side of it.
We go on it all the time to go back there. Without any problems. There's never another car even coming. If there is, you just, you just, you make it, it's easy. It's not, I don't, I don't know what twenty feet is, but it doesn't, I mean, I don't know if it's twenty feet or not, but it surely is plenty of room inside.
I'm never at problems, though. Or taking clients.
Right.
Okay, well, good luck. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Next up for us will be executive session. I had another on the Oh, I'm sorry. The general obligation bond series twenty twenty-two A are closing tomorrow, tomorrow. So, so it should be funded, combined tomorrow. We can done with that project, so. That's all. Executive session. Did you have something else to?
No, I just was invited on this part. I've talked all of them, so it's like Roger and everybody else.
Okay, who's, who's asking? How long? Thirty minutes? Under what?
I moved at the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at two thirty P M to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by K S A seventy-five forty-three nineteen B one. And that the purposes of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And the board come out of executive session in thirty minutes in the commission room basement of the courthouse. Those present will be the three county commissioners. Pat, County Councilor Pat Henderson, H R Director Jody Pat, County Councilor Pat Henderson, H R Director Jody Moore, and Senior Village Administrator Julie Martinez.
Been moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
I know, but I was wondering, but I miss the financial director. Okay.
Say another executive session. Okay.
No, I mean.
Well, I don't know what the purpose of it. Yeah, we continue this conversation.
I think we need to review the agreement.
The draft, yeah.
And this is, yeah, where it gets relation, like who's doing what.
Yeah.
I mean, because if we're doing this, it doesn't feel like it today. It did yesterday, but.
Mark should be part of that discussion as well. Again, for, what's your recommendation on time?
Well, I, I don't think that's enough time.
It is, we can go back then.
Okay. I, I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at three oh one P M for consultation with an attorney for the public body. Which would be deemed privileged to, in an attorney-client relationship as allowed by K S A seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion. And the board come out of executive session in thirty minutes in the commission room basement of the courthouse. Those, those present will be the three commissioners, County Councilor Pat Henderson. And Financial Director Mark Zeltner. And H R Director Jody Moore. And Senior Village Administrator Julie Martinez.
Wait a second. It's been moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Like reading people.
Is that?
We need to do it sooner.
What?
We need to do it sooner than later.
Is that sooner?
Should we go back in for ten minutes? I don't know.
Did you ever still read it?
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at three thirty-one P M for consultation with an attorney for the public body. Which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship as allowed by K S A seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen D two. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect confidentiality of the discussion, and that the board come out of executive session. In ten minutes in the commission room basement of the courthouse, those present, three commissioners, county counselor, H R director, financial director. And Senior Village Administrator.
Sorry. It's been moved in second, all in favor, say aye. Okay, back from. Second session, the next thing is public comment. Public comment, anyone on? It's been moved in second, it's to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.